Good evening. I call the Tuesday, December 11th, 2018 meeting of the School Board of St. Lucy County to order and extend warm greetings to all of you. I know there's a million other things at least going on, so we appreciate you being here with us tonight as we conduct the business of the board. If you would stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Kids at Hope pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. This would normally be the time that we have the performance from one of our student groups, but they are not here yet, so if you would allow, when they do get here, we will hear from them at that time. Open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of school board policies as listed. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address any of the policy revisions that are coming before the board this evening? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend approval of the policies as submitted.
Board members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Dr. Mills and Ms. Hensley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously at five zero. Public hearing is now closed. We move to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
Like to have -- is Dr. Perry here? If not, like to recognize our Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and our Outstanding Assistant Principal. So Samantha Episcopo is here, and so if the board members, if we can go down front, and Dr. Perry is coming up. Samantha is our Assistant Principal of the Year, and she currently works over at Dan McCarty, and we'll be talking about our Principal of the Year Andrea Popwell. Andrea is not here. She recently had shoulder surgery, as everyone is aware. Her mother is having some health issues right now. She's with her mom, and we recognized her at our principals' meeting on last Thursday. Dr. Perry?
It is my distinct honor and privilege to present the St. Lucy County's representative for the 2018-2019 Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award and Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership. Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent Gent, the Outstanding Assistant Principal Award recognizes outstanding assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. The program honors assistant principals that have also established partnerships with parents and community members. She has built her leadership credentials on the foundation of positive relationships and well-earned trust from those with whom she works. Her leadership in curriculum is respected and appreciated as she endeavors to maintain a culture of professional learning and implementation. She is supportive to her team and provides feedback as she coaches others to be their very best. Finally, the results of her efforts and respect of her colleagues are testament to her skills. Please welcome the Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year, our own Ms. Samantha Episcopo. And she has with her her wonderful principal, Lisa Sullivan. lead group of school administrators for their contributions to Florida's students, schools, and communities. The program honors outstanding principals who have established challenging, creative, Please come forward at superintendent's request. and engaging learning environments. She has proven herself to be an inspirational leader who affects positive change in culture as well as instruction. This is evidenced by her current school's stellar four-year graduation rate surged from eighty-two percent to ninety-seven percent and enviable status as the highest-performing comprehensive high school on the Treasure Coast. She has also led a once-fatigued staff into an enthusiastic instructional team with a respected voice in campus affairs, problem-solving, and decision-making. Strong evidence of her efforts to build a single-school culture are demonstrated by the academic push-in program where highly-qualified teachers voluntarily participate to support targeted instructional needs of students. Described as a pace-setter and mentor and affectionately known to all of us as "Pop," our Outstanding Principal Achievement Award recipient for this year is Andrea Popwell.
Superintendent and board members, it is always a pleasure as we open each school year. We look forward to the Big Brothers/Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake event. And to celebrate this and to acknowledge several of our schools who have raised significant funds this year, I invite someone whom we all know and love and has dedicated her life to literacy, Dr. Judy Miller and Ms. Taylor Fonzworth, to please share these awards.
Well, thank you so much for having us here again tonight. This is my last one as I'm retiring at the end of this week, but I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do, and I know you're going to continue to do after I leave. Bowl for Kids' Sake has become a huge tradition, and I don't know another event where a hundred percent of the schools participate, and that's just amazing to me. You all and your schools raised nearly fifteen thousand dollars this year toward our net profit for Bowl for Kids' Sake, which goes directly back into the school-based reading mentor program, so you're absolutely awesome. We have a trophy and some plaques to distribute, and so first of all, I would like, and I'm not sure if they're here this evening, but I'd like to call Representative from Sam Gaines in fifth place to come up. I didn't think that they were going to be able to be here. Okay. Fourth place is FK Sweet. Woo-hoo! Barbara! Third place is Rivers Edge. Come on up. Second place is Floresta. And first place is Morningside this year. Woo! Thank you so much. And thank you again from the bottom of our hearts. We so appreciate. So, can we take a picture? Let's take a picture.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All your support.
We have already sang this fine lady's praises. As the Principal of the Year, she always comes through thick and thin, and we would like to invite her to come forward because she has now arrived, so that we may please get a picture with you and our Principal of the Year, Ms. Andrea Popwell.
And at this time, I would invite Ms. Carmen Ortiz to please make her way to the front. Our faculty and staff go above and beyond in their service, and it is such a thrill when others recognize their dedication and commitment to quality. I am so pleased with Ms. Carmen Ortiz, our Risk Management Specialist for St. Lucy Public Schools. She bears the distinction of this year's Outstanding Risk Manager. She was presented with this honor at the annual In Touch Excellence Awards event. The award recognizes outstanding performance in the workers' compensation industry. Ms. Ortiz says that she loves what she does and wants everyone to know that she is always available to help. She began her career in risk management nine years ago as a safety specialist and has worked in her current role for the past five years. We look forward to many more years of service from you, and thank you so much for what you do. And now I invite Ms. Deborah Wiest, who is our Director of Child Nutrition Services. She is going to share some outstanding news that has come to our district.
Superintendent, board members, St. Lucy Public Schools continues to make teaching students about healthy living a priority. I'd like to welcome Eric Stern, the Executive Board Member for the Healthy Schools, to present our award to the board. Thank you.
Good evening. School Board Chairman, Mr. Gent, Dr. Prince, it's an honor to be here tonight. Some old friends. Get to see some old friends. Yeah, old. As a member of the Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools, it is our pleasure to present the Silver Award Florida Healthy School District Flag to St. Lucy District Schools. The Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools is a grassroots partnership whose members represent organizations such as the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, Action for Healthy Kids, Healthy Kids Corporation, Florida Charter of the American Academy of Pediatrics Chapter, Cancer and Heart Associations, Alliance for a Healthy Generation, the Florida PTA, and a great number of statewide professional health organizations. The primary purpose of the partnership is twofold. It is to inform advocacy for school health and recognize excellence among Florida school districts. One way to inform advocacy is through data, and we have such rich data in Florida with the Florida Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Overall, Florida is heading in the right direction with decreasing health risks for students, especially at the high school level. Scoring a Silver Level Healthy District indicates that your district is working towards addressing the needs of your students. The most important area assessed is the criteria for becoming a healthy, Florida healthy district, is district infrastructure. Having a solid district infrastructure in place is the strongest indicator for future sustainability. Your district exceeded in several areas, such as nutrition services and education eighty-six percent, staff wellness at eighty-five percent, and family and community involvement at ninety-six percent. The Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools applauds your district for establishing a positive culture and climate and for working toward reducing and eliminating the barriers to learning. Thank you for remaining at the forefront of ensuring a healthy future for Florida, and we look forward to supporting you with tools and resources and trainings in the future. But today wouldn't be possible if we didn't recognize a few people. We wouldn't recognize Ms. Deborah Wiest for taking the lead, the entire wellness team, and Jennifer Muzen. Without their help, we wouldn't be here today. So on behalf of the Florida Healthy School Partnership, we're going to present a nice polo shirt to Mr. Gent. Only fifty of sixty-seven school district superintendents are receiving that shirt, so he'll wear it proudly. We fit him up in the right size, and we'll take a picture with the flag. Thank you.
And now we move into our Star Awards. I would ask that Mr. Brandon Roth, a fifth grader at Mariposa Elementary School, along with his principal, please come forward. Brandon, as you know now, is a student at Mariposa Elementary, and he is definitely to be commended for his courageous actions during a life-threatening situation. This summer, Brandon was riding his skateboard when he discovered a neighbor in distress lying in her doorway. He ran to her aid, flagged down a passing car, and called 911. That wasn't the end of it. He felt compelled to wait with her until the rescue trucks and the firefighters arrived. His quick thinking and immediate action averted what could have potentially been a tragic outcome, and he recently received a Citizens Hero Award from the Fire Department. We also honor what you have done and celebrate your quick and responsible thinking. And for our final Star Award for the evening, our students have many unique and wonderful skills and talents. As a school district, we strive to provide the very best quality education to help students achieve their goals and dreams. This evening, it is my pleasure to welcome Ms. Maddie Polina-Melizia. Please come forward. She is a successful senior at the St. Lucy Virtual School. Maddie appreciates the support of her teachers, her principal, Mrs. Imba, who is here this evening, and most importantly, she really, really appreciates the support that her father has given her in her unique journey. He and other family members are here this evening, along with her brothers, and we would invite them to please come forward as well. It's important that you know that Maddie manages her time between studies and training to make some significant accomplishments in the sport that she loves. This wonderful lady who is here this evening is a surfer. Most recently, Maddie claimed the Russian Federation National Women's Surf Championship, all while maintaining her very high academic standards. To find out more about this motivated young lady and her career, we invite you to tune into WLXTV's Eye on St. Lucy and watch a recent interview that we did with her. You can also find it on YouTube. We're very proud of your accomplishments.
Well, Mr. Superintendent, that was a great feeling to have so many recognized for the outstanding contributions they make, from the youngest to the oldest. That's really neat to be able to honor folks for their outstanding work. At this time, we would have our CTA report. Mr. Freeman?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Gent. It is not news to this body, or at least I hope it isn't, that public education has been under organized, sustained attack for over two decades in Florida. Opportunistic legislatures and businesspeople in Tallahassee have worked to starve public schools into failure. We see this in the roughly forty-seven cents per student increase in discretionary funding this year. This year's budget from Tallahassee, while being touted as record-breaking, did not bring per-student funding back to even pre-recession levels. This year's legislative session is shaping up to be no better, with the governor-elect appointing Richard Corcoran as Education Commissioner and his education transition team as a who's-who of charter school advocates and benefactors. Against this backdrop, it is important to begin looking at other ways to fund the recruitment or retention of high-quality teachers and support professionals here in St. Lucy County. With many of our neighbors passing referenda giving educators substantial compensation increases, St. Lucy Schools has no choice but to explore options where we will not remain competitive, at least in my opinion. But this kind of work takes time, and although time is of the essence here, it's going to take time. So we also need to start looking at ways to make people want to remain as part of the St. Lucy County family, things that don't cost a dime and can be done right now, things that enhance the professional experience in St. Lucy County, basically allowing educators and staff professionals to practice their profession as professionals. In short, we need to make St. Lucy County a place where professionals want to come and where they want to stay because they can practice their craft as professionals. We, the union, look forward to exploring these ideas with you as we move forward into another year of attacks on public schools. And so I want to thank you for letting me speak, and also because I don't know if I'll see, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and to you as well.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone from CWA tonight? Okay, seeing none. We will move to our consent agenda. Board members, the agenda has been presented before us. Entertain a motion to adopt it as presented. Thank you, Ms. Hensley and Ms. Hilsen. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, are there any items that you wish to have separate discussion or separate vote? Hearing none and seeing none, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Mills. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now we move to our superintendent report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone. I want to echo some of the comments that Mr. David just made and talk to the board just for a second, to the public. This past last couple of months, we've reached compensation for all of our employees. Our CTA employees received an eight-hundred-and-fifty-dollar retention supplement. Our CU employees received a two-hundred-and-fifty bonus and also will receive a supplement amount equivalent to their next step in the salary schedule, and those have been ratified by those two groups. Our CWA employees have not yet ratified, but will receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bonus in addition. Returning employees will receive a supplement in the amount equivalent to their step within the salary increase. Unfortunately, these are not reoccurring expenses due to the fact, as David had mentioned, that it's been apparent in the state of Florida for the last couple of years that we're really not getting compensation in dollars coming to the local school districts that have flexibility and don't have strings attached to them, along with some unfunded mandates that are going on that are out there. And I know it's a high priority for this board, and it's a high priority for myself to adequately compensate our employees and our teachers and all employees for the fantastic job that they do in our school centers. This past year, in 2018, twenty school districts across the state passed referendums, whether for general operating, eight did for general, I'm sorry, twelve did for general operating expenses, and eight did for capital expenses, including our neighbors, Palm Beach, Martin County. Martin County passed two. Martin did a general, for general, and one for facilities, a half-cent and a referendum. Palm Beach County did a full-mill referendum. Broward County did a referendum, as well as Miami-Dade County. And there's, in the last, since 2012, there's been thirty referendums. Twenty-six have been successful across the state of Florida. This district's turning things around in our schools, and we're starting to see a lot of successes. What that means is that with better education becomes better opportunities for our students, which equals out to better communities in general. And to continue to get better, we as a district must recruit and retain highly-qualified teachers. We need to raise teacher pay. We need to improve mental health services, and we need to enhance school security. Our other districts have done this through local referendums, and I believe that this is the time that our school district and our school board will need to step forward and look at the possibility of bringing a referendum to our community. This would positively impact our community. It will positively impact our quality of life. It'll impact the economic development of our St. Lucy County, and it will mean better schools, and it will mean better communities. We'll begin to have discussions in January regarding this process. I think it's important to note that within Martin County or within surrounding counties, but particularly Martin, Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade, and twenty other counties across the state, as well as some others, that teachers are going to be looking where the compensation is. Right now, with the recently passed referendums in our two neighboring counties, Martin County and Palm Beach County, between twelve-hundred to over ten-thousand dollars, there'll be more money for teachers based upon their years of experience. Teachers with over five to nine years to five to ten years' experience will receive five thousand dollars from those two counties. Teachers with over ten years' experience in Martin County will receive seventy-eight-hundred dollars, and in Palm Beach will receive ten thousand dollars. And then teachers with between one and five will receive anywhere between one thousand and, I believe, eighteen hundred dollars. We're currently also with beginning salaries with our surrounding counties are at the lowest. So if we're going to continue the positive things that we're doing right now, and we're going to continue to increase our graduation rate, and we're going to raise student scores, this is on the backs of our teachers and the backs of our employees, and they have done a phenomenal job.
and don't have strings attached to them, along with some unfunded mandates that are going on that are out there. And I know it's a high priority for this board, and it's a high priority for myself to adequately compensate our employees and our teachers and all employees for the fantastic job that they do in our school centers. This past year, in 2018, twenty school districts across the state passed referendums, whether for general operating, eight did for general, I'm sorry, twelve did for general operating expenses, and eight did for capital expenses, including our neighbors, Palm Beach, Martin County. Martin County passed two. Martin did a general, for general and one for facilities, a half cent and a referendum. Palm Beach County did a full-mill referendum. Broward County did a referendum, as well as Miami-Dade County. And there's in the last, since 2012, there's been thirty referendums. Twenty-six have been successful across the state of Florida. This district's turning things around in our schools, and we're starting to see a lot of successes. What that means is that with better education becomes better opportunities for our students, which equals out to better communities in general. And to continue to get better, we, as a district, must recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. We need to raise teacher pay. We need to improve mental health services, and we need to enhance school security. Our other districts have done this through local referendums, and I believe that this is the time that our school district and our school board will need to step forward and look at the possibility of bringing a referendum to our community. This would positively impact our community. It will positively impact our quality of life. It'll impact the economic development of our St. Lucy County, and it will mean better schools, and it will mean better communities. We'll begin to have discussions in January regarding this process. I think it's important to note that within Martin County, or within surrounding counties, but particularly Martin, Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade, and twenty other counties across the state, as well as some others, that teachers are going to be looking where the compensation is. Right now, with the recently passed referendums in our two neighboring counties, Martin County and Palm Beach County, between twelve-hundred to over ten-thousand dollars, there'll be more money for teachers based upon their years of experience. Teachers with over five to nine years, to five to ten years' experience, will receive five-thousand dollars from those two counties. Teachers with over ten years' experience in Martin County will receive seventy-eight-hundred dollars, and in Palm Beach will receive ten-thousand dollars. And then, teachers with between one and five will receive anywhere between one-thousand and, I believe, eighteen-hundred dollars. We're currently also with beginning salaries with our surrounding counties are at the lowest. So, if we're going to continue the positive things that we're doing right now, and we're going to continue to increase our graduation rate, and we're going to raise student scores, this is on the backs of our teachers and on the backs of our employees, and they have done a phenomenal job. And again, like I mentioned at the beginning and echoed David's comments, that can't be done relying on the state. As it seemed to trend across the state, governments, local school boards are going to their local voters, and they're placing an emphasis on this for the quality of life in their communities, and that's something that I'm going to recommend that we do as a board, and we'll be sharing this information and going out and talking to our community members. So, I wanted to share that with you all this evening at this time. Also, to wish everyone a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and Happy Holidays. We've had our students that have been performing in our school centers, and they've been in parades, and they've been out singing in different storefronts, and it's been a very, very nice season. We have a lot to be thankful for, as we mentioned before, in St. Lucy County, for the fantastic employees and for our community members that come and support us, and our community members that come in and ask us questions and challenge us, and that's part of democracy, and that's important to us as well. So, I hope that everyone enjoys the holidays. We have two weeks left, or I don't know how many days, but we've got eight days, eight days left. I'm sure the teachers know out there. And wouldn't the students be surprised if they knew that we look forward to a vacation more than they do sometimes? And I would appreciate you all being here this evening as well, and wish everybody Happy Holidays. That completes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report? Thank you. We'll move then to our school board member reports, and Ms. Hensley, we'll begin with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had the privilege of attending our annual meeting in Tampa for four days. We did not receive a lot of positive news, but we did receive a lot of training and a lot of interesting information. There are seventy-seven new school board members in the state of Florida, of which I believe seventy were there the entire time. So, there have been a lot of changes, and so was a lot of energy and a lot of hallway conversations, and some of us have been asked to kind of give some information and help some of the brand-new ones so that they can kind of hit the ground running with as much information as possible. Also, I said on the Early Learning Coalition, we will be moving into new semi-permanent headquarters shortly, because, as you know, our Early Learning Coalition got flooded out at the Orange Blossom Center, like the district did, and moving into a different building with more space, as will the Communities Connected for Kids. That's the foster care organization. We'll be moving into a new headquarters probably in May. Part of the organization has already moved, actually, this week. And New Horizons has a new executive director after many, many years. His name is George Shopland. He is coming to us from running the Mental Health and Drug Treatment Hospital for St. Mary's, and he's very excited about working with the school district and our professionals. And with that, it's been, it's always a privilege to deal with the professionals we have in this community and in our school district. It is wonderful to be able to work with a group of people who are mission-minded and children-focused. Thank you.
Ms. Hilsen?
Just, Mr. Freeman and all our union partners, I think no such time in history has it ever been more important for us to find a level playing field with our union partners, because education is under attack in the state of Florida and in many states presently. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate our team and working with your team and CWA. That is an important part of our educators. I just was going to share something kind of cute. My youngest daughter and I were shopping in Tradition, and we ran into three little girls, teenage girls, holding baby dolls. I thought it was really babies, and my daughter has a six-month-old and a two-year-old or three-year-old, and I realized, I stopped, and we started talking to them, and they said, "We're doing a program from St. Lucy West, and it's a program with teaching the girls what it would be like to have a real baby." And they, all three looked very flustered and said their babies cried all the time, and one of their babies wanted to eat all the time, and I just got such a kick out of it, because I think that we need to be proactive with our young students. This is a wonderful program, and of course, my daughter commiserated with them because her six-month-old is still up several times at night. But I love that our schools think outside the box. I love that our teachers and our principals and our staff members, and I even thought this morning, I got up about six o'clock, and I thought, "There are bus drivers and high school teachers that have been up since four o'clock or five o'clock in the morning, and I don't think I'd be fit to drive a bus as cold as it was and as early as it was." So, I always want to remember to say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," because what you do is so impressive and so important, and it shows the best side of St. Lucy County. I grew up here. This is my home, and when I feel that we're under attack by outside people and everything becomes so political and we lose the vision, children first. We all say it, and it becomes rhetoric from the policies and politics in Tallahassee, and it's very disturbing to me, but having the local people that work so hard, and thank you so much, because I know some of you put in fifteen, sixteen-hour days. So, if you don't always hear, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do for our precious, precious children. I appreciate you so much, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Dr. Mills?
I also thank you as a family, as a school family, as a school district, for everyone doing your part to ensure the success of our St. Lucy County children. I'm not going to say much, except Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to you all, Happy Hanukkah and all, Happy Kwanzaa, and all the other Happy Holidays that's coming up, and it's the time and season to give, and so, we're giving thanks to you for all that you do.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Central, Westwood, and even Port Centennial came to the Fort Pierce Parade, and it was a long way for Centennial to travel, and we appreciate their support in the city, and just wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
For my comments this evening, I want to take a moment to thank our superintendent, especially. These are trying times for public schools, and he is showing leadership that is going to take us to the next level and making some tough decisions and some tough recommendations to this board, but we are so supportive of him, of the recommendations that he brings forth. This one that he was talking about tonight with a local referendum, it's a huge, huge undertaking, but it shows our commitment to our teachers, to our staff, to our whole educational family here in public schools in St. Lucy County. So, while it will be a challenge, it's a good challenge, because we can take the results of this. We have total control over it. Tallahassee can't override us with this. What we designate this referendum to be for is what it will be for, and we are committed to increasing the salary levels of all of our staff folks. It's embarrassing to us to have to grovel with Tallahassee, and it's not working. So, to be able to go forth to our community, and a community that supports our staff as well and wants to be supportive and helpful in any way possible. So, while I said it is a challenge, we look forward to that challenge, because St. Lucy County is worth it. And just to close by saying, again, to echo everyone's comments of Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, we hope you get a lot of good rest as this year comes to an end. It means we're halfway through our school year, which seems totally unrealistic, but here it is. Thank you for what you do, for the support that you provide to each other, to your students, to the families of your students. It's an honor to serve and to work side by side with you all. So, a final wish for Happy Holidays, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year. The meeting is adjourned.